Are we not doing a light tonight? Okay, perfect. I won't wait for it any longer. Good evening and welcome to the. Is it? A selectmen meeting? It is a selectmen meeting. Tonight. It is November the seventh, Thursday, the time is five oh five, and I would like to open with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Tonight, most of the night, we will be going over budget presentations. Mike Connolly is excused for the day, for the night. We knew he was not going to be here and we're gonna get started here. I think Mr. O'Mara has something he wants to say.
I just want to let the board know that when we met as a group, we did some general assumptions. The price of gas should be the same for highway via PD. I had to move to put in a four percent. Raise up to four percent within their budgets depending on how they can see raise the shouldn't go about if anything. And the last item is.
Technical difficulties, people.
Should be out here. And the last item was that. Three years ago, the board asked. All departments to include. Phone and IT related costs in their individual budgets to stop taking it from the cable. Fund. That year we went into default, so there was no money coming out of cable and no money in the budgets. So you may see some increases in those lines this year, but other than that, everyone's done a great job so far. We can turn it over to the.
Okay. Alright. You guys like to start? Be my guest.
We like it. Alright. Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight to the board and Jim. You're gonna see a little different presentation from the police department this year. Our budget has been a work in progress for quite a quite a long time now. We've been working on it for the last couple of weeks strong. It's a compilation of three different folks doing this. Myself, Chief DeFlumery and Katrina. We've all had a shot at this and. We're gonna present it in a form of a PowerPoint as well. We can go through the PowerPoint at any point if you have any questions. Feel free to stop and ask us. I'm gonna let Rob, I'm sorry, I'm gonna let the chief take. Take charge of this. If we have to double team you. Come in and help out, I'll certainly do that, but. Rob's gonna take over and get us going.
Alright, thank you, chief. So the Newton Police Department's mission statement. The mission statement of the police department is to actively improve the quality of life within the town by reducing crime as well as the fear of crime. Empowering the citizens and achieving integral work and relationships with our community. Appointed elected officials, emergency services and other communities functioning within the framework of our justice system and social service system. And move on to our value statement. And so the value statement tells the community in the manner. Which we're gonna conduct our business. They're not just words. We really believe this and this is the way we're gonna conduct ourselves. So. The first is trust and confidence. Second is professionalism. The third is accountability. The fourth is integrity. And the fifth is respect. And. Everybody buys into these values and it's very important to us. It's the vision of the new police department to become the benchmark for law enforcement excellence. The objectives and goals, setting objectives and goals for the agency converts the mission and values of the organization at the targets. And performance milestones that represent a commitment to producing specific results in a specified time and frame. So our two thousand twenty-five goals. One of our biggest goals is gonna be retention and hiring of personnel. Continues to be one of the top priorities. The department will need to hire a full-time officer to be fully staffed. And department has begun to the process of recruiting. Two more part-time officers along with the full-time. Another goal is comprehensive equipment replacement. It's necessary to keep. Required equipment and good work in order, including the motor vehicles, safety equipment, new technology and computers and speed control equipment. Another goal is to continue our partnership with our schools to update and train on school emergency operations. And one of our biggest goals is to have twenty-four hour coverage, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five days a year. And that other full-time officer is gonna be integral and providing that. Provide high-quality training for personnel to continue to grow and improve as a department. We have to provide these opportunities to everyone. We constantly send offices to train in. And a variety of topics like active shooter supervision investigative techniques. As well as online training. As a matter of fact, Katrina and I. Were at accreditation training today in Conway, New Hampshire. Provide efficient and effective police services to the community. Continue to provide quality of service and customer satisfaction to the residents. Improve traffic. Enforcement initiatives to make our roads safe for all of our residents. So begin New Hampshire state accreditation, which we started today. And we hope to. Get accredited within the year. Provide resources and training to our senior citizen population who are being targeted by criminal scammers. That's something that we're trying to get together. We're gonna have it here at Town Hall, hopefully. Because the. Elderly in our community have been targets with a lot of scams. Immerse the police department's community programs such as coffee with the cop. Pizza with the police, just getting out there and having the community be closer to the police department. And be able to come to us with with anything. Collaborate with surrounding police departments and participation of National Night Out in two thousand twenty-five. It's gonna be on Tuesday, August fifth. The event promotes strong police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Makes neighborhoods safer and more caring places to live and work. The goals listed above are the way we accomplish our last goal, which is our ultimate responsibility. And that is to increase the quality of service and customer satisfaction to make Newton a safe place to live and work. So we have a couple of slides show you guys like what we do here. Motor vehicle incidents, accidents and. I'm sure you guys all know that area. It's the worst intersection around Maple and Amesbury constantly having accidents there. Police revenue. The police revenue generated by the police department has never been documented. Starting in two thousand twenty-five, the police department will track the following sources of income. Parking tickets, detailed vehicles fee, detailed administrative fees, copies, pistol permits. Police department does not generate any revenue from the enforcement of motor vehicle violations or criminal cases. But any money collected fines for these cases go to operate the court system in the academy. The two thousand twenty-five personnel. The police department consists of nine full-time sworn officers, two part-time officers and one part-time animal control officer. One full-time administrative assistant and two contracted. Court prosecutors. The personnel breakdown. Police chief. One police lieutenant, two police sergeants, one's currently open right now, one SRO at the school and four patrol officers. So we participate in the drug drop-off on national program. We brought in nearly two hundred pounds. On the drug takeback and that, you know, keeps drugs out of our landfills and away from the wrong people. I think it's a great program. We're gonna continue to do that. Two thousand twenty-four significant expenses. We got new firearms for all staff. A new handheld radar radar unit. Significant increases in training. Speed enforcement equipment. We got grants for that. Implement a comprehensive vehicle repair program. Uniform upgrades for everybody. New parking tickets. Records management system update, a new patrol vehicle. General equipment purchases and the community outreach. The dunk tank, the trunk of treat and the old home days. So the two thousand twenty-five budget is increased by eight percent over two thousand twenty-four. This amounts to seventy-two thousand seven sixty-six point forty. That may be a little, little off, but it's pretty close there. The increases are mainly due to the wages for a full-time employee and that's that full-time body that we talked about. Now we're gonna feel the, the, the weight of that new hire in two thousand twenty-five. The, a four percent wage increase for the department and that will bring us up to. A comparable salary around the Rockingham County. Add a fuel cost to the budget. The fuel line item was never in our budget and where we've added that to, to, to our budget now so we can have transparency with the community. Microsoft license expense that's gone up. Goal of hiring two new part-time offices to help us out with. We're generally gonna, because we're fully staffed, we're gonna have more PTO time to cover more holidays and the two part-time offices will help us greatly. Many line items have been level funded or reduced in this year's budget. A deliberate, a deliberate well-thought-out budget will increase retention and attract quality new hire candidates. We're gonna staff the two, the whole department. The new, I'm sorry, our new schedule is gonna be twenty-four seven. With, without the use of out-of-town on-call offices and that's. A hundred percent our goal and it's gonna happen with the staff that we have now. Pursue the goal of becoming state accredited. We're gonna. Try our best to be accredited within the year. The ability to provide extensive training to our staff with an emphasis on supervisors and we. Have improved on that greatly. As a matter of fact, one, our lieutenant is. Finishing up FBI leader training today in Hampton. Improving community outreach. We've done a better job at that. We're gonna continue to do that in two thousand twenty-five. Here's a, just a. Photo of us training at the Kingston High School doing active shooter training. That's one of the things that we do every year. The next one is Lieutenant Mascaro getting a diploma from a two. Two-week supervisor school in Rhode Island. At Roger Williams University. Next one is. A major theft investigation at the Duke State Line Store. The next picture is. A. Department awards, Officer Ma, I'm sorry, Sergeant Mounsey received an award from the. CAC for an outstanding job on a case or a very important case. Community outrage. Halloween safety fingerprint services, prosecution services, rabies clinic. Free gun locks, the drug take back. The senior barbecue, old home day, trunk a treat, the SRO, Luca, our comfort dog and ride to school in a police car. There's a community outreach pitcher that was on truck a treat and everybody was having a blast. The chief came, the dunk tank. Who's that? He was very soggy that day. The next one is our SRO with Luca at the school. That was a ride to school with a cop day. The next one is our senior barbecue that we had, which was a huge success. Town did a great job. And this pitcher, Robin, a strong arm to everybody to put her in the presentation, so. There it is. So statistics is the next one, next one. So. We, we compiled some statistics, but. In all honesty, we gotta do a better job with. Document and statistics. We're having a tough time with Rockingham County. They're launching a new computer system and it's been tough to. To correctly get the right numbers. Here's some, some numbers, traffic citations fifty, incident reports a hundred and twelve. Arrest thirty-nine. Assist citizens a hundred and seventy-four, motor vehicle accidents twenty-four, parking enforcement fifty-five, motor vehicle stops two thousand fifty-two. We're gonna do a better job with that in two thousand twenty-five being fully staffed. And we're gonna do a better job cracking it. Thank you. Are there any questions for anybody?
I think we have a different sheet than what he's going off of because the numbers are different.
In terms of the totals?
Yeah. Well, I mean, he said eight, mine shows seven.
Right, and I just gave it to Katrina and Katrina can give it to the chief.
That's fine. It's, I, no, it's the very first one we got, so. You got, oh, this was the email. This was the one in my folder. So the one in my folder is old.
What is yours?
Well, I'm going to, different numbers are different too, but. I just sent it them in because I didn't get to meet them. I didn't see the email.
So there was a bookkeeper one and then there was a please one.
That's fine. I'm, I'm good with it. Alright. That wasn't a you thing. That was, yeah. That thing. So. Is this? The police would like to add salary of prosecution? So is that in here or not in here? The sixteen thousand for prosecute, it's in the. It's already in the salary line, I guess is what I'm asking.
Yes, it is.
It's actually a line.
Oh, it's a separate line item for it. Okay. Oh, I see it. Yeah, so it's not, oh my god. I'm gonna put that sheet away.
Gotta go.
It's not on that one. That's fine. That's perfect. I don't have any questions myself right now as I was just giving the right sheet. Awesome presentation. It really shed a lot of light on the changes that are coming, the changes you wanna implement. And just the budget outline and how things are going. So right now I'm good. Obviously, if I have any questions, I'll email you or I'll call you and we'll go over that. Joe Simone, do you have a?
No, the only question I have is see petty cash has one dollar right here. Do you keep any petty cash on here?
Right now, we, we close that. We're not gonna keep petty cash, but we keep keeping a dollar in there to just, just in case we have to open it back up. Yeah.
Okay. You're good? Bob, do you?
Yeah, I'm good. Good for right now.
Okay. Joel?
I'm good. I gotta look at these numbers.
Okay, which is fine. This is just a.
Different than what we had.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good. Mr. O'Meara, did you have anything? Wow. Really?
Yes, I do. Chief, you show sixty-eight thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and eighty cent increase in your full-time salary lines. That represents. The new officer that the board approved.
Yes.
In the current budget year.
Yes, it does.
And thirty-one thousand dollar reduction in vehicle lease. One came off the rolls.
Yes.
So you went down by that amount.
Yes. So with the vehicle, we're gonna pay our last payment. On our last vehicle and then we'll have no more finance financing at all. And in two thousand twenty-five, we're not gonna need a new cruiser. And hopefully. In two thousand twenty-six, we'll be able to buy one outright. And. That's based on. Us still continuing to put money into the police detail, special detail. It's a revolving account. And the police cruiser and equipment capital reserve account. So in two thousand twenty-six, we'll be able to purchase and actually own the vehicle. And not have to finance it.
So I guess I know this is a little. Ahead of us, but I would assume you guys wanna continue on with the deposit or warrant article for the capital reserve.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
We do it that way, so it's not such a big hit. And if we're not, if we can buy it outright, all better. So.
Correct.
I was just checking in on that.
Thank you.
And that fourteen percent increase on the salary line includes the four percent.
That's correct.
Wage increase.
Yes.
So it's the, the new position and the wage increase.
Yes.
All in that fourteen percent.
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. We know about the IT, the fuel. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm good right now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chief, could you share with the board your. Thought you're kicking around regarding the ACO and a part-time officer?
Yes. So our ACO just resigned.
ACO means?
Animal control officer. Thomas Wilson just resigned, did a great job for us. And we have a part-time officer Cindy Flynn, who's been very good with animal control calls herself. She's just a natural at it. And we're gonna be keeping her part-time certified and naming her the new ACO. For January first. We're gonna be sending her to all the ACO trainings, ACO one and two, and she'll probably be the best ACO trainer, yeah, in this area, so.
I agree. Yeah, that's a good move.
Thank you.
So it'll be a reduction in your headcount by one.
That's true. So she's, she's a part-time officer. She's gonna stay part-time and be certified. Through the department with all the trainings, her normal trainings, but she'll be available twenty-four seven as an ACO.
So she'll respond as an on-call. As needed basis for that.
That's correct.
And then I see, I was looking real quick that your police detail, you pretty much just swapped. Instead of having the two full-time and then part-time, you're making it all just full-time?
That's correct. There was no need to keep them separate because it's the same pay.
Just, yeah, it's just a detail.
Yeah. That's, that's correct.
So the AC, if her going to your part-time ACO. She's still going to be a police officer.
She's a part-time police officer and she'll be certified. She'll qualify with us with.
I guess that's what I mean. So she's still gonna have that. Ability to be a police officer and an ACO.
Right, okay. But her main focus is the animal control.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I think we're good, chief.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
I guess I just wouldn't.
Thank you, Chief DeFlumery.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to accept?
No.
Okay. No, no, no. Conditional.
Certainly. Yep, you can acknowledge receipt. Which would be fine. The thing I was just gonna make an observation that you're gonna have a number of experts in the area of expertise. Come and speak before you and they often use acronyms that everybody at home is going, what does that mean? So I encourage them not to use acronym. It's just stay the way. You know. It's, and that goes for all the departments when they come to fill the board so that everybody knows what we're talking about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, next up, we have trustees of the trust funds.
Oh, I skipped.
Hi, I'm Nancy Kuzlosky, trustee chairman of the trust funds. So I've never done this before and all of you probably don't know me, but. I am the chairman of the trustees of the trust fund, so my budget is small. And what would you like to know?
So you had no postage line in there at all? Is that?
There was none.
Okay. Which is fine. I'm not questioning that at all. You have to mail things.
And I feel like the poor cousin who comes and says, will somebody give me a stamp?
Yeah. I completely understand.
So under, a question I have, under, under training, why was there no money expended for training this year?
There was. But I don't. So we did a bad budget. I don't know. There was because Liz Walker and I both took a online course for seventy dollars each.
Okay. And it was seventy dollars each, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Was there any travel?
No, it was online.
Okay. That's fine. Do you need more training? I know this is, you're new to this, but do you need more training?
Yes.
You do. And do you think that you would exceed the number that's in here for training?
I do not because I would prefer to take it online rather than to travel. So what travel isn't expended could be pushed towards more training.
Yep. Okay, so you're fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And how about office supplies? You had nothing expensed office supplies?
Not in two thousand twenty-four, but there will be in two thousand twenty-five because I print at home. And I am not gonna expend any more time to come in here for printing. So I print at home. I use my ink and my paper and I'm gonna actually buy ink and paper.
If you do that, just give your receipts and, yeah, it's a hundred percent fine. It's just. That way we can get you money for it.
Okay.
You know, yeah. Okay.
Would you explain the potential legal fees that you'd like to have?
I will. Okay, since I was new. I needed a lot of help from Amy Nichols in the Department of Justice in Concord. So during my many phone calls and emails with Amy, she wanted to see the. Cemetery sales forms. So I sent her the last three since Bill Landry became. On, on the cemetery trust. And. I should have made you copies of. I should have made you copies of this, but I didn't.
That's okay.
So she said. So what she said is while our office is not permitted to provide legal advice, we can say the courts have ruled in the past that individual perpetual care is considered to be each of their own trust fund and must be reported separately on the MS nine, which we do. And this I already know is what she said. Um, the document you provide provided for the nineteen eighty-four cemetery contract clearly this describes perpetual care funds, which we knew. For the documents after that, we suggest that you review this with town council for legal determination as we are uncertain if any other documents or information is given to the purchaser. We are unable to make a legal determination for the town absent any specific wording in the contracts. They have the contracts here if you'd like to see them. They do not specifically say that they are not perpetual care. They do say in the second after nineteen eighty-four that um it's a right to bury and now they say it's a right to inter. But it doesn't preclude perpetual care.
So essentially you want the legal line just to rewrite this last this form?
Uh, it it would be good if we rewrote the form and to have legal opinion on how the form previa the last two actually are perpetual or not.
So going forward, this wouldn't be something that you would leave in there. You almost like want.
Just one time.
That's that's what I that's what I mean. That's what I mean. Exactly.
And then the other part of the legal um problem is Joe, could you please tell me which one of the cemeteries?
Yeah, it's a it's free funds that we have under the within the simply trustee to the trust funds, but they're actually uh union cemetery, which Newton has no control over. So we've been uh working with uh over over the year to try to get those funds switched out.
Okay.
And sent back to them.
So I've tried to contact the trustee of the trust funds for the Union Cemetery.
Right.
And I have not been able to get a response from um them or he. However, it's really not a big deal. They don't ask for anything. I just report them on the MS nine as has been done for. Some of them like are a hundred years old.
Sure.
So they just get reported on the form. Should they start asking for money? And then I would say no, because I don't want to research the trust fund to see how it's supposed to be distributed. And it would be better for them to have it, but to expend legal money.
And the lawyers would have to uh would have to do that process.
Amy Nichols said she'd have the lawyers get back to me, but she never has um because she starts that they have more pressing things to do.
Okay. Uh, anybody else have any questions? Please, ma'am, go up to the microphone.
So I
Name.
A quick question is so that one-time legal fee, would we would we be looking to just take that out of town council? To be able to pay for that?
Yes.
We don't need to add the line.
Now we're there, we don't have to create that line and would make life a lot easier.
Which is fine.
Question is, I didn't have access to this, so um. Hmm? No. So has the board decided how you're going to handle Microsoft licensing, uh antiviruses, anything with IT?
Nope.
You haven't. So she has not put anything in her budget. So she uses Microsoft Office?
I've used the town's computer.
Which has.
Totally lacking in everything. That's all I can say.
So this is not in her budget. Where are you gonna get the money to support that?
We'll figure that out.
Okay.
We're not there yet. No, no, no. I I get it, but eventually it's gonna be in your budget whether you like it or not, right? But this is, we're not even close to that yet right now.
Okay.
I totally understand what you're saying. Most of us have just seen this. So we all have to do this work.
Okay, I just wanted you to make sure that you don't forget it.
Everybody's right, so.
Okay.
Do the trustees have a town laptop or they have?
Uh, we'll address that later. If your laptop is lacking, with all honesty, bring it to Robin. Robin will call our mind and we'll get it taken care of.
It's not that it doesn't work. It's that it's really old.
That's my point, though. We'll take care of it. There's no reason we can't take care of it. Sure. But we'll we'll handle it. Don't don't not say something like if I was using an old computer, I would first person I went to was probably her and be like, I can't use this thing.
I can't even set up my home printer to print off that. I have to email me what I want to print and then.
Yes, a hundred percent. We will take care of that.
Yay.
Uh, I think we're good. We're good. All right, we're good. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You did good for our first time. Yes, a hundred percent. No, you have to stay here. Nope. Mr. Landry.
Thank you.
You are up next, sir. Thank you very much.
Why not to stick that in my eye? Bill Landry, Newton Cemetery Trustees.
Evening.
And I'm sure you've all studied this twenty twenty-five budget closely. Soon as I put my glasses on, what I'd like to do, I'd like to, there's a couple of things I'd like to go through and uh it won't only take a few minutes. If you take a look at the twenty twenty-four approved budget, that increase this year was the first increase in our budget in five years. And it was due totally to the stipend that the town gave us back in March for the four trustees. So having said that, we jump over to twenty twenty-five proposed budget. And we have six line items in there. Three of these, the consultant services, the repairs and the supplies were reduced for next year. Two of them, the veterans' flags and the stipend remain the same. And the only one that went up is the landscaping of the grounds care of the three cemeteries. And uh that went up, but I guess you would say substantially, but that's because it's ninety percent of our budget for one thing. Um, the other thing is this contract that we sign is a three-year contract. So we're gonna go up twenty twenty-five. We won't go up again with them and probably not even on the budget itself, because we try to keep it the same every year. So we we don't expect to look for another increase until twenty twenty-eight. If we're still around, yeah. Um. Yeah, so I just wanted to make those points in case you had questions regarding that.
Nope, we signed that contract, so I knew that was gonna be. Yeah. Um. I guess I do have one question and it's going all the way back to twenty twenty-one. What did you spend nine hundred and thirty-one in supplies on? And now it's only two hundred bucks or a hundred bucks? No, I mean, that's just curiosity more than anything.
Well, you know, off the top of my head, that's tough to remember that, but for the past going. Well, I'm gonna say when we first took over, there was nothing in the cemetery.
Sure.
We purchased and put up a shed
Yeah.
over at um um Willow Grove. We put tools in there. We put tools over in the Highland Cemetery and uh.
Also did markings, right?
Pardon?
Did you do some marking thing or whatever?
Oh, we we did marking in the ground. We changed the the um the sod. We took up all the grass at Willow Grove and did all that.
Okay.
We've done a lot over there in those cemetery.
I was just wondering, because.
I I can get you exactly what I.
I bet you can. Um.
Looks like you went over on flags. Is that just a one-time thing that do we need?
On what?
Flags?
Uh, yes. Um, well, you know what the costs have done in the past few years. So we had put that in and uh when we went back to reorder, we do that every spring.
Yeah.
To replace all the veterans' flags, the pole flags and so forth. And, you know, they stuck it to us just like they out with everything else.
Sure. So should we increase that going forward?
No, not this time because one of our trustees has a friend who gave us about a hundred perfect veteran flags, the right size and everything. So that's why we're gonna leave it the same.
Perfect. I don't have any questions.
No.
You guys good?
Good.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
I I have a question. Bill?
Bill?
Damn it, I almost got. Yes, sir.
Has Nancy been in touch with you regarding um the cemeteries we don't own? And are they well-maintained in terms of community appearance to keep up with the work that you guys do?
Nancy, what Nancy, which Nancy? Oh, okay. And and I'm sorry. What was it again?
The question is she's trying to get the capital reserve funds associated with cemeteries we don't own out of our bank accounts and give the money to the appropriate parties outside. Have you been able to uh assist her in that? With contacts of people that you may know?
Uh. You're talking about the ones that we don't the other than the three that we work on?
Yes.
Um. Quaker Grove belongs to the town. We don't do anything in there. Nobody goes in there. And there are probably three more, but they do not belong to the town. They belong to the heirs. Like the Chase Cemetery behind um up on Willow Mine Drive. That we've gone in there with the Boy Scouts and cleaned it up on occasion, but that belongs to the the heirs. We have nothing to say about it. Nothing to do with it.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
The uh I can just uh speak for the Quaker Grove Cemetery. Uh several years ago, a bunch of us residents got together and cleaned it out, but the thing is it's overgrown now and some of the old stones are toppled over. And uh, you know, it it does get trashed every now and then a few of us go in and clean up the trash.
Yeah, we were, a couple of us were in there a month or two ago looking at it and it's, yeah, we we just don't do anything in there and it's, it goes back to the eighteen hundreds.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the stones in there, some you can't even see. And uh, so, but again, we just don't. There there doesn't seem to be a reason for us to go in and do anything major to spend town money in there. No.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks.
So uh Mr. Guide has uh he needs to be excused because he's a uh so we'll be taking over for now and if we could have the cable committee next.
Are you talking to me?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, okay, uh Diane Guide has a prior engagement this evening. And so I'll be taking over. So next week I'd like to have the cable committee on.
Whoa.
Okay, so Diane Moore, a member of the cable committee. So the cable committee is recommending uh level funded at sixty-two hundred. The only thing I've changed in there, I don't know if you have the updated one, is I took out, I moved from uh consultant services. I lowered that to a hundred and increased other expenses to four hundred to cover our annual subscription to Adobe Pro. So it's the same amount of money, just move things around.
Good deal.
Awesome. Were we gonna talk about these microphones tonight?
I don't know.
Yep.
Okay.
When you're done.
Is this the microphone things? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Paperwork on that.
What about pay increases? I see there's no change on the salary.
Um, we have room in there because we have, we have room. What if I did my calculations somewhat correctly? Um, we should have enough in there to cover if we decide.
Already in the budget?
Hmm?
Already in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any questions?
No, I just said if she wants to tell us about these microphones. The cost, I guess.
Well, I have a couple of items that are related to um. What do you do again?
Cable.
Cable.
Who are you? I I believe that um this request has been uh born out of frustration when Diane is at home trying to listen to us and she hears other noises or loud noises that interrupt the flow of information that goes from the board to the community. And she has recommended the purchase of three mixers and one day of labor for a total of six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, this succeeds the five thousand authority that we have as department heads and the town administrator. So it's coming before the board. And also, uh, I believe that Diane would like to have the board make a motion to uh withdraw from the cable cable revolving fund.
Correct.
An amount equal to this purchase. So that's six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars. Um, I know it's not on the agenda and the board doesn't like to make motions or do anything when it's not on the agenda. This is kind of timely, I believe.
Um, yes.
It it'll be helpful for this process that we're going through. And um that's why I have and I have another cable-related item uh after this one, if you would just take action on.
So with that said, uh.
I can make a motion. We'll make a motion to um pay the six thousand two hundred eighty-eight dollars to Peerless AV uh for the three mixers and the installation uh fees to come out of the cable revolving account.
Seconded.
Uh, motion made by Joe A., seconded by Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Diane, I have one more, just in case there's a question that I can't answer. Highly unlikely, but in the event that that has happened. Um. There was a a purchase in the amount of three thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars for two laptops that came out of the finance budget when it should have been taken out of the cable revolving fund. And so before we can make a journal entry to put the monies or charge the monies to the appropriate account, we need a motion from the board to withdraw three thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars, two cents from the cable revolving fund and it will basically reimburse the finance line that was that was charged that should not have been.
So moved.
So can I ask where those where those um laptops went to with department?
Um. Town administrator?
Where?
Town administrator.
You? You got the laptops?
I got one.
Okay.
I got the other one.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, all right. Just so you guys aren't aware that that fund is dwindling quickly. And last check, I think it had nineteen thousand. So right now you've spent uh over s- almost ten. Yeah, so just to be aware.
And going forward, we're
Correct.
We we've made that announcement to all the departments.
Taking this.
They're to include everything related to IT that was formally taken out of this revolving fund into their operating budgets. It serves two purposes. It preserves the fund for major purpose purchases.
Right.
Um, but it also gives you a clearer picture of what it actually takes to operate the various departments because they're including all of their charges. It's much like what the police did by no longer paying for their fuel out of the detail fund. They've actually put it in their operating budget. Again, it gives a clearer picture of what it actually costs with on the PD. Thanks, Steve.
Yep, all righty.
Well, this motion.
So.
We took it out of cable. We weren't and we should have taken it out of finances. Is that the?
The other way around.
Oh, we took it out of finance. We want to take it out of cable.
Yes, so the the motion would be to um withdraw withdraw from the cable revolving fund.
Three thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars?
And two cents.
And two cents from the um cable revolving fund to be to reimburse the finance line in the general fund.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Bob, seconded by Joe A. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous?
Thank you, Joe. Well, the next.
Uh, next on the agenda is ZBA and planning board. Mr. Doggett?
ZBA.
Hey, would you like to do ZBA first or planning?
Uh, let's do the ZBA first.
Yeah, okay. Uh, ZBA, most of the numbers are staying the same. Uh, there are some minor increases such as advertising lines since we no longer have Carriage Town News. And we now have to use the Lawrence Eagle Tribune. Um, that budget. Line item of those for one ad paid for by the ZBA. The legal net. The legal line has stayed the same. Uh, as has office supplies. Um, the major increase is in salary. Um, as you can see, this year is going to be in the red by the end of the year. I gave you a breakdown of the average, which is eight point seven hours per week. If you multiply that by two hundred fifty-two weeks, you end up with four hundred and fifty-two point five hours. And what the anticipated pay rate next year will be, uh, it comes out to eleven thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
So. In the years past, why, why are we putting more hours in now? What's changed?
Uh, the hours are driven purely by the number of applications that we get and the amount of work that has to be done on those applications.
So this is, this thirty-nine percent increase isn't for raises, this is just for hours?
I'm sorry, you have to speak up.
So the thirty-nine percent increase on salary is that just for hour, more hours added raise?
You you have to realize that the eighty-four hundred dollars that was approved in last year's budget. Was, the selectmen had decreased that from what was proposed. And right at the moment, that salary line is going to end up. Probably a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars in the red at the end of this year. So that increase represents the true number for this year.
However, that's based off of what you said, Jim, a record number of applications that have been processed, right? Which does not necessarily mean that the following, the next year, it's going to be the same thing.
Right, however, this year, in an order to try to keep this number down, there are certain things that. Need to be done for the ZBA that have not been done such as um bringing the. Files into compliance with the state regulations on what needs to be retained. Uh, various people that have been secretaries or administrators in that office in the past. Some of them have done bizarre things with the files such as label them according to who the applicant was. So I need to do research. I have to go through every single file to see whether or not it pertains to. A certain map block and lot number.
And how far along are you in that process?
Excuse me?
How far along are you in that process?
In that process, about ten percent.
Really?
I have another question and it could be an error. There's not a single year-to-date expense in your budget, other than salary.
I apologize. Being way over here, the acoustics in this room are are really bad.
Twenty twenty-four, there's not a single year-to-date expense on any line item in your budget except.
That's because, that's because most expenditures, um such as office supplies, postage. Uh, training are all done at the end of the year. I buy postage stamps in December, um, when I know the condition of the budget. Um, office supplies, I've always purchased in December. Uh, training. The training through the NHMA is a week from Saturday. So those numbers are not showing here um as expenditures because. The the bills have not gone through um. The bookkeeping office yet. Um.
And yet there's no expenditures for two thousand twenty-three in those lines either.
Yeah. I, the 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 training has gone up this year. NHMA used to be ninety dollars per um. Person for the Land Use Law Conference. Which is the major training per year. It's gone up now to a hundred and fifteen dollars per person. However, I I retain that at that level. Um, the travel expenses, there will probably be two vehicles going up. That Saturday. To Concord and back. It's approximately. A sixty mile trip there and back. So those numbers, they're, they're going to be um twenty twenty-four expenditures there. In twenty twenty-three, I managed to get like office supplies. I knew some people whose businesses actually went out of business because of COVID and managed to get us some, the town a bunch of free office supplies. That's not happening again, you know. Um, I'm actually going to have to be ordering envelopes and. What have you for for the office. The training that was done in twenty twenty-three, they were still doing virtual. They, NHMA has dropped doing virtual training sessions. It's now in-person only. So that number is. Didn't happen. When they were virtual, there was no travel expenses. However, now that everything has come, that COVID is sort of off the books. Or at least hopefully um manageable. People are expected now to be physically present for training sessions as Mr. Marshawn knows because he received an email. About the training for the New Hampshire. Um, Land Use Law uh Law Lecture Series, which is a week from Saturday. Um, at the moment, I have three people going. Two of them are from the ZBA and that's going to be. An expense of two hundred and thirty dollars against this three hundred and sixty that. There's still an opening for one other person from the ZBA to go. Same thing happens on the planning board.
All right, I'm I'm all set with this for now, but I'll look at these again. But I'll wait a date.
I'm good for now.
Mr. uh, O'Meara, any questions?
I do not at this time. Thank you, Jim.
Move on to the.
Planning board.
Similar to the ZBA, but with a much lot, a much larger budget is the planning board. Um. Once again, the planning board is looking at a record number of applications um this year because. Uh, the diligence of your building department at. Sending people up to uh make sure that they're in compliance and doing what they have to do. Um, once again, certain things here like um office supplies, postage. Training. And the bulk of the travel will not be billed until. Your, your next vendor manifest cycle, so it doesn't show up here. Um. We have been lucky in the the legal line. Through a certain amount of due diligence, most of our legal expenses for the planning board have been. Actually paid for by the applicants who caused that legal ex- the. Expense. Whenever possible, on both boards, we now charge applicants. Anytime that we can because. It should not actually cost the taxpayers of the town of Newton money to get a legal opinion. Based on an applicant. You know, an applicant should not be spending taxpayer money to end up with a legal opinion. That all gets shifted back to them as we've done with some of the circuit rider. Uh, most of the circuit riders' costs this past year were covered by um the HOP grant that we received. And from a grant that the Rockingham Planning Commission received regarding uh groundwater. Protection ordinances for uh Newton and Southampton. Between those two grants, we were able to. To take down a substantial amount from the circuit rider contract. Next year, the groundwater grant goes away. That was thirty-five thousand between the two towns. Um.
And the consultant services for the master plan have also been covered at this point under those grants because of the work that we've been doing. That is being actually contributed to the master plan.
And well, actually, that that saved us, that grant for the groundwater saved us a lot on the consultant services. Because in March on the ballot, there is going to be a major. I'm assuming the planning board is going to propose it. There's a major change to the Groundwater Protection Act. Um, in the town of Newton. While a grant paid for the.
So there'll be a warrant being put on. I've told the selectmen that.
That that's going, that that money is going away and we. So we will, we will have to be paying. For our circuit rider. Ourselves instead of from a grant. The HOP grant, hopefully we will get the second round. But we, it's not guaranteed and we will not know until January. Um. I would be loathe or remiss to stand here and say, oh, yeah, we can take money out of there because we know we're going to get that. It's very likely we will. And that might sa- save us a few thousand dollars off the circuit rider line. But this year, because of the. Some of the projects that that came in for the circuit rider to review had to do with hu- specifically with housing and. Um. Dwelling units. She squeaked that into the, into the HOP grant. Next year, the requirements, if we get the second round of the HOP grants. That will be purely for redraft of ordinances in accordance with what. The planning board proposes. She will no longer be able to use her HOP tent, HOP grant funds to fund some of her circuit riding. Because it will no longer fall within the scope of the grant. This year, a lot of it did, and we were lucky. But next year. Um, and also, this does not, this does not show what we've expended. For. September, October, November, December, because we only get a bill from them quarterly. I'm trying to get them to back it up so that we get it early enough in December that it comes off of. Out of this year's budget and it's not so late that we miss your last vendor manifest.
For her, for the, you're talking for the circuit rider contract?
Right.
Yes.
So you need to encumber some funds at the end of the year for that?
Excuse me?
Would you need to encumber some funds for that?
That, that's, I I'm already, I'm working on, on that. And right at the moment, I believe the figure is around thirty-five hundred. But. We have a very good circuit rider. She is probably, well, she's the, the head of the. Rockingham Planning Commission's Land Use Division. She is very knowledgeable. She is worth every penny we we pay for her. She's also fifteen dollars more per hour than. One of the newer people there. It's worth the fifty, the the difference in cost is worth the fifteen dollars. An hour, but still. The circuit rider costs us, I believe it's eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents an hour.
What was the travel for?
Excuse me?
You have travel expenses, but you don't have like any training?
Uh, that, that travel time is uh covers going to training. It covers. Earlier this year, there, there were a couple occasions when I was required to take. What were considered sensitive documents to town council, which is now in Exeter. Um.
Well, you brought up training, but there was nothing built to training.
Well, the, the, there's nothing listed as being spent yet in training because I haven't gotten all of the um. The planning board members that want to sign up for the upcoming.
Trainings just get, taking place now, Joe.
Yeah.
So there has been no training up until this time of the year.
All right, well, he just said that he had traveled to training, that's why I'm asking.
Well, that, that, that's where the rest of that, that, that money will go. Um.
Then what about your telephone line? I see nothing in there for expenses.
Which reminds me, Mr. Marshawn, would you like me to put you down for training? You can speak to me later.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the, 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 the training line and the travel line are probably going to be fairly volatile. Um. Depleted. By the beginning of December.
And then how about the telephone line? You don't have any.
The telephone line, I don't know why it's still there. Um.
You have a telephone?
They took that, that away several years ago when we converted to. I believe we now have Comcast. We were with a different service and all of the phones. In town hall had different call numbers rather than extensions. I mean, Diane probably knows it better than I do, but there's a.
Someone else's budget? Is that coming from somewhere else, another budget somewhere? So we need to fix that.
You need to put that in there.
Okay.
Same thing with ZBA, there's nothing in ZBA for that. I'll just go on back there.
What you see in front of you is what was sent to me as being the existing budget. That line was there. It has no account number. And it has been zeroed out. I didn't believe that it was my, in my position to remove a line from what's technically your budget.
Well, we don't want to remove it. We're gonna add, probably have to add a figure to it, a dollar amount, because right now cable's paying for everybody's phones. Right, I mean, the scary thing, sorry.
That's my.
So the phone system in this building has, we have our own PBX, private branch exchange. So Comcast supplies us a phone line into it through voiceover IP. And in that voiceover IP, we have four or five lines. But we have one main line, so it's called a hunt chain. So you ring, you ring line one. If that's busy, it just goes down to the next one and hunts until availability, until you get to the five and then you get a busy signal. So that phone line, right, those phones, uh, a closed system. So if something happens to those, that system. It's a very old system. It's probably hitting on to fifteen years. You won't get anything to repair it. So it's something you may want to think about to upgrade at some point. Um, you could go all voiceover IP through Comcast or some other company, but it's very expensive, so. There are things you need to think about in that area, but as far as telephone line item here, they used to pay their own. But now it's just with, it's a centralized unit here. Does that help?
Yeah, that's fine. I guess it does, but is there any way to break out that cost as to what the true cost would be though?
The only way you could do that, it's, it's a Comcast bill, so you'd have to.
Portion it by the part.
Yeah. Break it all off.
Diane?
Yep.
May I, Mr. Jim? Um, since this was always coming out of cable and now each department has to budget on their own, will they be receiving their own bills?
No.
So finance is gonna have to ferret through. So finance is gonna have to ferret through a single bill and allocate?
This is what I had, I had recommended that you put the, the Town Hall, I told you is kind of like combined, all the departments are combined, so maybe you put that into like a general fund, uh, the general government building fund for the phone for the Town Hall.
Right, one central fund because it's all centralized.
I understand that, but how would the PD, how would finance know what the PD's?
The, the PD is separate.
Because they have their
Fire.
Fire is separate, they get their own bills.
It's just this building, okay.
Just this building, okay.
And that's the system that you're saying would need to be replaced moving down the road or looked into? The system you said that would need to be replaced or looked into for, is the system we're using here? Okay. Any reason why we hadn't done it in the past?
Because of being broke, don't fix it, and we didn't have the money.
Okay.
It's been working, I mean, you know.
Yep, right.
I got, okay. Just the ballpark, do you happen to have a number that would cost to change the system here?
It depends on how you want to go, do you want to keep it as its own PBX, you'd have to upgrade that um.
If you want to, like voice over IP.
Right, voice, well, you, again, you have to choices, right? You can use Comcast voice over IP, Verizon voice over IP, you can get your own PBX again and use voice over IP. Whatever you do, you're going to have to upgrade a, a lot of equipment. I think in the police department, and they have a, a lot more phones, I think, and a lot more um with bells and whistles, so I believe their Comcast bill is over five hundred a month. And that's for phones, internet, um, voicemail, all of that.
Okay, well, thank you for the
So wouldn't it be so that we don't get away from um what took place in the past? I mean, so we get away from what took place in the past, instead of having so many different providers when we have issues trying to figure out all of that and maybe to get a better deal, it would behoove us to centralize and go with one vendor to take care of everything where we might be getting a, a better deal.
That might even be better for, include police and fire and the beach and all that.
Right, under, from one contract.
So if you did something like that, the benefit of that is if you need to call Katrina, you would just dial an extension.
Right. Same thing with the beach or wherever.
Right.
Okay.
Well, thank you for the update, it's probably something we really need to look into that moving forward, I appreciate it.
Uh, so that's food for thought.
Jim, continue along.
I, I will say one thing when it comes to food for thought, if you look back to the twenty-twenty-one when they actually listed the telephone bill, planning boards, ZBA, nobody was actually charged for the basic service. What they would do every month is they would take the long di- we actually paid separately for long distance calls back then. And it didn't matter whether your department made a long distance call or not. You paid one-fifth, you were billed for one-fifth of the long distance calls that went out of this building.
So back then, they did a portion?
Right, so quite, quite honestly, you know, the, there are four, four organizations downstairs and one up here. We each paid a portion, whether you use long distance or not.
That's fine, we're good with the phone at this point, we can
So if there are any other questions regarding the amounts, once again uh in twenty-twenty-four, um, the average is twenty-two and a half hours per week of um time, you can see there the um calculation times fifty-two weeks is eleven-hundred-and-seventy hours and it that pay scale comes to thirty-thousand-two-hundred dollars. Once again, this line, if you look at the year-to-date expenditure um that is going to be probably around twenty-four K by the end of this year. And once again, in, in, in order to keep this number down, there are things like files, the, the database of the planning board asked me to create a plan so that we didn't have to go researching that, that they would be available. On the website, you'd be able to find every recorded plan that the planning board had approved and recorded um, since it came into existence or as far back as it goes in the registry um that has had to, had to be put on hold. And even at that, it's still working out to actually, planning board's working out to write about where it was expected to be, always be. We've been averaging between two and three applications per month. When I started here five years ago, we averaged one per month. So you have all the additional paperwork and what have you that goes into it. Um, the ZBA is the, the side that has exploded a bit in time. And the ZBA actually benefits a little in that my day, like today, I started at six-thirty this morning, which was just about twelve hours ago um. The first two and a half hours were ZBA. Then I switched over to working on planning board stuff because board packets came out today, yours is in your drawer um. However, if the phone rings and it's a ZBA question, it's not like punching a time card where you, you know, you stick a, a slot in and say, okay, for the next fifteen minutes, I'm doing ZBA. So planning board, because it's the second half of the day, if a call comes in, I don't make the distinction, theoretically, at some point, these two budgets should be combined because you're not able to do one position purely.
What other um, not really has anything to do with this budget, what other positions um?
Do you mind if I come closer?
Yeah, I just want to know what other positions you, you're involved in with the town, I know joint loss, that's no, like the joint loss, right, you're secretary for that, or not the secretary?
Um, administrative assistant for the planning board as a town employee.
Okay.
Is the, the, the jail on C. I also um support Mary Jo
At election.
On, on, on election day.
Is there any others? Is that all?
Well, I, I'm, I'm a member of the Rockingham Planning Commission.
Okay.
The trustee also, trustee, the trust one also.
Well, but those aren't hourly, that's what I was looking for, just
Yeah, no, that, that, the, the, those those are other, and things like the HOP, the HOP grant.
Mm-hmm.
I administer those, but that, the HOP grant pays for my um administrative time.
Okay. Jim, as, as, as an aside, you mentioned that the planning board asked you to put together a, a, a plan registry for the website? You mentioned something about the planning board asked you to put together a registry of, of plans for the website?
A list of all the plans, the plans all a list of all the plans that the planning board has approved and recorded will eventually be on the Newton website so that if somebody comes into town and they want to know, be able to do the research or they, they need to know where their bounds are, what have you, they would actually be able to look there. It's, it's more of a, a courtesy for the townspeople, but if board members have questions about, wait a second, didn't we, you know, we have board members that have been around for a while. They want to go, gee, Jim, I think ten years ago, we did a, you know, variance for a subdivision over off Gale Village Road.
Hmm.
Regretfully, that, that's when I have to go through the files and go, I wonder what their name was because they're all by name, not by
So that's still a work in progress then?
Excuse me?
It's a work in progress right now or?
Yes, yes, actually, that's that list is probably about forty percent done because what I'm having to do is I'm actually having to pull down the, the image from the registry and then create a, a PDF file and actually has to be a PDF slash A file archive um that somebody would actually be able to print out and if need be, we could print it out as a full size.
So I assume then you do it, you do it in between your spare time then, right?
I do what I can that is practical and realistic. In July, when there was very little going on on either board, I got a lot of files done. Since then, there has been too much activity and you know, I'm not, you know, I'm not sitting out back twiddling my thumbs, um, there's you know, if I do get time, I'll, I'll just pull out a stack of files and do them, but it's, it's taking longer than I anticipated.
Any other questions? I'm all set, no, I'm good.
Good for right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is general assistance.
One sec, I'm gonna take care of that, Mr. Jim, in a second, please.
Good deal.
General assistance, um, hold on to your hats. Um, this year, uh, in, on the um line that's called um more rental and mortgage assistance, um, we budgeted, well, Lisa budgeted um, seven thousand four hundred thirty-three dollars, you can see expended year-to-date fifteen thousand ninety-two dollars. I've spent some time with Lisa just reviewing the processes of how people access uh, the general assistance availability of subsidy monies. Um, there is no rhyme or reason for this escalation that's occurred. Some speculate it's the economy and fuel prices that are unaffordable. Um, but as you can see, I mean, it's um close to seventy-seven hundred dollars over expended in that line. That will actually make the overall budget over expended, which is something we stay away from, and I think from a practical standpoint, we want our departments to spend their lines and their budgets as it actually requires. So if you budgeted a hundred dollars and you spent one-ten, we want to see the one-ten
Correct.
with the minus sign, so we actually know what the need is.
So you have a historical.
And you can see what Lisa did was um she didn't go quite with what the actual was, but a, a rental assistance and a mortgage assistance. She spent year-to-date fifteen thousand ninety-two dollars, but next year, she's asking for twelve thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars. Um, an increase over the prior year of fifty-one, fifty-one hundred thirty-four dollars. Um, everything else is, is very flat, as you can see, and that's the only thing that threw a wrench in the works as far as this budget goes um.
Jim, is this, we're changing the name of this from welfare administration, is that what happened?
Um I don't want to say this, uh, general assistance, um public assistance, um, welfare has a stigma associated with it from the fifties and the sixties that no longer appropriate, so to be politically correct to change that, move it in the direction of
It was different on the spreadsheet.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm reading it too, Joe, so um, yeah. So um, wherever possible, we try and maintain people's dignity when they're coming to ask for help. And, and please keep in mind that uh Lisa and her husband do an unbelievable job. They take a lot of their calls, return a lot of the calls that they receive here from home. Um, she is the, hmm? Teen, what did I say?
Lisa.
Yeah, sorry, teen, wow, wow. I'm sorry, long day, indeed.
There was a change.
Indeed, um, but one of the things that we did discover is that um a function of working primarily out of your home is that most of the records associated with public assistance were in fact at their home.
Right.
Um, we've since secured a file cabinet, and so um they really can't be coming in here all the time. They work full-time jobs, they have other duties aside from helping us out with this aspect of municipal government. So um, we kind of reached a happy medium, which was anything that's inactive in terms of a file will come here, stay in the file cabinet, anything that's active or current will stay at home for their easy accessibility.
Makes sense.
Um, because every time there's an application made, they have to go back into the file and look at it. But then when it come, becomes inactive, it'll come here for a permanent record. Um, it was probably not the, the best system, but it was allowed to happen, but government documents should be in a government setting.
Exactly.
Yeah, um, is there an application for these or are we just paying based on people coming here asking for assistance? Is there a whole application process?
There's a lengthy application process, um, there are a number of requirements. Um, I, I, I had to do it in one community for time, for a short time and it's um, it's, it's a lot of work, there's a lot of verifications. Um, it's not uncommon to request a, an applicant who received assistance to drive or, or, or how they can traverse up and down one-twenty-five, but wherever this help wanted sign, you should probably stop and ask if
Right.
fill out an application, so s- s- seeing names, places and the person that they spoke to at a variety of businesses is also checked out.
Okay.
Um, and we look at assets, bank statements.
Hmm.
So it's not, hey, I need help, there is a very lengthy process that goes on and it goes on at every application level, so um
Does it every month?
And, and I need assistance with my electric bill. We would do that. When they come back again, the process starts all over again. Because circumstances can change.
So they can't just do it at the beginning of the year and then they're all set all year?
That is absolutely correct, okay.
Yeah, it's just like if you went to the state and applied for fuel assistance to get oil, you have to fill that out, your bank accounts like Jim's talking about. There's a whole procedure to it, it's not just saying, okay, yeah, we'll give you this.
Um, I, I guess this would be anecdotally, um, but it'd be helpful for um the community to know that um when, when people are eligible for any type of public assistance that we offer um if they meet the criteria, we have no way to say no, we are statutorily obligated to provide that assistance, perhaps reasonably, yeah. Thank you. And so we can't say no, um, quite frankly, we
With, with that said then, is that number proposed, is that too low-based to follow what was spent this year?
Again, Joe Lauder?
With that said, the number which was proposed for two thousand twenty-five is that hi- is that, is that high enough, or should it be increased?
Or is it high enough?
Yes.
We're treating that this year as an anomaly, and we're hoping it's going to scale back down.
Sounds like a plan, good, thank you.
Because look at all the previous years, it was much lower.
Yeah, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's doubled and there's nothing you, you can put your finger on.
Uh, there's just, it's just a, an effect of the economy.
Yeah, well, hopefully, the way the economy's going right now, fuel prices are starting to come down a little bit and some on the groceries, so we'll see.
Any other questions on this?
Well, if, if my main Mr. Chairman just pointed out that um in addition to um us not being in a position to deny assistance when it's needed, we would literally have to find the money elsewhere.
Yeah.
Um but determining eligibility by community, the rule of thumb is where the person laid their head the prior evening is their home community and they can go to that local government and ask for money. You know, um, it, it, it's been identified that there are some folks who actually look for communities who aren't strict, who don't have things in place to check some balances
Yeah.
and they will come and reside at a motel room in that community so they can go to the Town Hall the next day to access these monies, so
Yes.
I mean, there's an angle for everything, and it's not exclusive for people who need public assistance, but it's um it's, it's made easily accessible and keeping in mind that our representatives to the community make every applicant aware of alternative sources of funding to help them in their timely needs. State level, at the county level, and um then of course at the town level.
Well, my hat's off to Tina, who has, I think, to do a good job for us.
Certainly do.
Yep.
Certainly do.
Excellent.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Uh, is there any other business to come before the board this evening?
We don't necessarily have to do it this evening. Um, I, I had sent you earlier in the week a copy of last year's uh final warrant that um, but everything passed except for the road bond.
Right.
Which was um, I believe, warrant article number three, that uh we put on, everything else passed. Um, and I just asked you to look at it, there are Um, and I just asked you to look at it. There are a number of requests that are annual requests. To deposit money into ca- capital reserve funds and um. Those are the ones that you need to see if you want to continue to. Do that. There are some communities that may, when they're doing everything every year, sometimes they break it up and do it every other year depending on the need. For example, you heard the police department say they could purchase a cruiser right now out of the balance that's in that fund. But if we choose not to. Ask the voters to add money to that fund.
They won't be able to.
Right after, right after we make the purchase, we will be in the hole.
Right.
So it's, it's, it's a steady process. So it's, it's, I mean, it's a good idea. It. It prevents spikes in the operating budget and you spread a large purchase over time. It's, it's good business for the taxpayer, quite frankly. So um, if you just take. Again.
Well, we'll have to take a look at that and see what's going on, where, where, where the tax bill will be getting set at. You know what I mean? So there's all kinds of variables that we'll be looking at. Yes.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, we're looking at the warrant for the first time last year to see what's going to carry over. And any new initiatives the board may be interested in pursuing will also make their way onto the ballot as well for permission. Uh, you will see in. Well. I said it myself, the public assistance budget.
General assistance.
General assistance.
General public assistance budget. Um, there's thirty thousand odd dollars. Those monies represent the. Agencies that help residents in town, particularly the underserved.
Right.
In the local area. There used to be a warrant every year and the community never says no. So we just decided to not put it on the warrant anymore because it takes up space. It lengthens our warrant, quite frankly. And when you, when I look for a place to put it, the most logical place would be in uh, the general assistance budget. And so that's why that went up last year by a significant amount. No tax impact. It was simply shifting the location of where the money would be funded.
Right.
Uh, and I should point out too, that when, when agencies apply. For funding, they have to already be on the list. We can't add, we as a group can't add to that list.
They would have to come before us to be approved.
We would actually put it on the ballot. But if somebody drops off and we usually, I use a, a two-year window. If somebody's on that list for a specified amount of money and they haven't asked for two years. They're coming off because obviously they don't need it.
Yep.
Kind of a home rule rule, if you will.
And those requests start coming in shortly anyway, right?
Yes, and they're required to provide a copy of their annual report.
Right.
And to identify the number of Newton residents they've served with that.
And years gone by, they were, they came before the, the town. And gave their report pretty much.
Oh, really?
Oh, yes. They did that.
That information is available. I think they get, I don't know how many cities and towns there are in Rocky Ham County, but if they had to go to every, every voter selectman in the county, uh, they wouldn't get much sleep. But anyway, that's my story.
That's your story and you're sticking to it?
I am.
So um, with that said and done, we're due to reconvene next Thursday for some additional meetings.
Yes.
If there's anything else before the board.
Almost. We just ran out of time, five o'clock.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the fourteenth Thursday, then again on the nineteenth as part of the voter selectmen's meeting at six P M. And uh, the twenty-fifth. Uh, Monday will be an additional review. These are preliminary presentations. Um, the final presentation is as far as they're concerned. But the information is preliminary because you have not made decisions yet on anything. And you are encouraged to call back any department that you would like to hear more from. As a result of seeing information for the first time, but not really having time to digest it. And then as you're reading over tonight and the next night, you may have more questions for a particular department. Simply uh, let the chairman know and I will notify the department and they'll come before you to answer any questions you may have.
It sounds like a plan.
Diane. The microphones?
Yeah.
We approved timeframe, month, two. All right. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
That's it.
So if there's no other business before us then, a motion to adjourn?
Uh, no, cause I'm gonna make a motion that we go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one. Dash A colon three two parentheses C. So we'll close the public portion of it.
Correct.
Okay.